Good morning, and thank you for joining us for this May 1st meeting of the Cedric County Commission. Today, we're holding a special meeting so that commissioners can discuss what's next regarding the county's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Part of that discussion will focus on stay-at-home and public gathering orders that we've all been living under for the past few weeks. Whatever commissioners decide today, please remember to practice good hygiene during this pandemic. Wash your hands frequently, cover your coughs and sneezes, and even consider wearing face coverings to help prevent the spread of the virus. Good morning, commissioners and Chairman Meitzner.
Thank you, Van. Good morning. Good morning to the public. Thank you for tuning in. Welcome to the special meeting. I'll call to order the special meeting, May 1st, 2020. A couple of housekeeping items. Because of the setup due to the coronavirus, we, as you all noticed, we've not been able to sit in our traditional chairs. And similar to, similar to what happens at the city council and here at the county commission, when you needed to speak as a commissioner, we pushed a button and we were recognized by the chair to speak. And our last meeting, our decorum got a little bit off tradition. And so because we don't have electronic buttons, I would, I, we've come up with the suggestion that we're either going to raise your hand or raise your thing to be acknowledged and you'll be recognized by the chair. And then we'll go back to what our traditional way was. Anybody that's speaking, speak until they're finished. And then anybody wants to speak and try to keep an order of who's requesting to speak. And although this, this environment allows for, for kind of, it looks like it's open dialogue, we need to keep the decorum of what we've, what we, we are used to. So I apologize to the public and for us as a, as a body, the, the last meeting got a little bit, but out of whack. But, but that's okay. We, we're all working through this. It's a new, it's a new world right now and, and a lot of, a lot of issues happen and a lot of emotions get elevated. Overall, we're all getting that kind of information as well from the public. So with that, I call the meeting to order and hope that I don't need to use the gavel. We'll, we'll use this instead and we will start the meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present. Madam Clerk, next item.
New business, item A, discussion of stay-at-home and gathering orders.
Okay.
Commissioners, I might kick this off. I think the, kind of the outline for this agenda item will be have a county counselor or his designee kind of go over the governor's order that we all learned about at 6:30 last night and then have discussion of, the commission, the Board of Health has a lot of options after that, one of which is not to go more, less restrictive than the governor's order, but a lot of other things to discuss and it would be a good time to have an open dialogue just based on what, on, on the governor's order last night. So I think Justin Wagner is going to kick us off. Justin?
Okay. Thank you, Tom, and welcome, Justin.
Thank you, commissioners. Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. All seek to summarize the governor's, what the governor announced last night as her plan to reopen Kansas. Could best be summarized as a phased approach. There's, I'm going to start off by focusing some on, on phase one, then I'll, after I talk about that in quite a bit of detail, I'll briefly summarize the additional phases. But this would all begin on Monday, May 4th. And executive order number 2020, 20 dash 29 is the executive order that was enacted yesterday that would, that would establish phase one. And to summarize it, I guess the first comment to make is that there'd be no gatherings of more than 10 people in one location unless the individuals are able to maintain six feet of distance from one another. An exception would be for people who live together. And then it would allow infrequent incidental moments of people being closer than six feet to one another. So this would allow for gatherings of greater than 10 people to occur within a facility or location. Theoretically, you could have several groupings of 10 people or less, as long as each of those groupings was at least six feet from one another. So it is less restrictive than what's been in place over the past month or so. Also, phase one would require the following businesses and facilities to remain closed unless they would be repurposed for a use that would be fitting as an essential function under the governor's executive orders. Those businesses would be bars and nightclubs, with the exception of curbside and carryout services, casinos, which obviously doesn't apply here within Cedric County, but theaters, museums, and other indoor leisure spaces such as trampoline parks, arcades, et cetera, fitness centers and gyms, nail salons, barber shops, hair salons, tanning salons, tattoo parlors, and other personal service businesses where close contact cannot be avoided, community centers, outdoor and indoor large entertainment venues with a capacity of 2,000 people or more. I think it is worth noting, I, I wouldn't construe that as applying to any religious institutions. I don't think that's the intent in the governor's order on that particular item. I think we may have a few churches who have large attendances, but I don't think that would apply to them. Fairs, festivals, carnivals, parades, commencements, and graduations, swimming pools, and it notes other than backyard pools, so I think personal swimming pools, organized sports facilities and tournaments, and then summer camps as well. The, the order goes on to state that all other businesses can operate as long as the business can maintain six feet of social distancing between customers or groups of customers. The governor's order, action yesterday did not include the stay-at-home provisions, which would have individuals staying at home unless they are going to perform an essential function or going to permit an outdoor activity. So there's no longer a stay-at-home component to this order. Instead, it does urge all high-risk and vulnerable individuals to stay home except for essential needs, but it's just simply an urging, a recommendation, if you will. There are also industry-specific guidelines, document that there was a link to, and it's incorporated, and I think each of you have a printed-out copy of that in front of you. It's about a four-page-long document, has several links within it to whether it's CDC guidelines or other groups that have come up with best practices for various industries. Those are recommendations. They're not required to be followed by these business types, but I thought, I figured that was something that'd be important to at least look at because I know there's been a lot of discussion with the local business community about what kind of recommendations might there be for specific industries. It allows licensed childcare facilities to remain open. Education institutions are treated more or less the same way as they had been under the governor's prior executive orders. Local governments are allowed to be more restrictive than the governor's executive order, if, if that's what the local government would, would deem appropriate. One thing that it does is that it indicates whether an individual or organization performs an essential function is a decision left to local governments. It does say that, but any functions identified by the governor as being essential functions in her prior executive orders, or any individual businesses that had received a confirmation from the governor's office that they perform an essential function over the past month or so under her, her stay-at-home order earlier, would be allowed to remain open. And then the document on its last page or so includes guidance, again, recommendations for individual, individuals, and also employers in the form of encouraged actions. Moving on to, and the, that's a summary of phase one. What she indicates, the governor's indicated is, again, this would begin on Monday, May 4th, no earlier than May 18th. And she's indicated that, you know, any movement into phase two would be no earlier than May 18th, and it would be determined based upon the overall progress of the state on outlined health metrics. I think if I remember what she said last night, she talked about deaths and hospitalizations resulting from COVID-19, if I remember correctly. And then it, there would be an accompanying executive order to move into phase two if that's what would happen. The main differences there would be, obviously, it'd be a lessening of restrictions, be mass gatherings, instead of being 10 people, it would be a 30-person cap. The, it would allow bars and nightclubs to be open at 50% of occupancy. It would allow swimming pools, community centers to be open. And then it also says, organize sports facilities and tournaments with some exceptions. There would be some, you know, there would be some additional things that would be able to be opened up. She proposes that to be for a two-week timeframe. Again, and she, she made the comment last night, this isn't set in stone, so I don't think any of this is, is fully established at this point. The only thing that's, that's been established by executive orders, phase one, which I'd already reviewed. The phase three would review, would begin no earlier than June 1st. It would not have any restrictions on businesses and would just, the only thing it would address would cap ma, mass gatherings at no more than 90 individuals allowed. And then the, after that, no earlier than June 15th would be the phase out, which would be, in other words, that there would no longer be executive orders that would be, well, I guess there would be an executive order to go into that phase, but it would not have any restrictions on the public gatherings or businesses. I'd be happy to stand for any questions. I've done my best to review all of this and I'll try to do my best to answer any questions, but there's, there's certainly a lot of moving pieces here. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. So a couple of questions I had asked were, can we just run down through them? So 81 Speedway, can you address them?
Give me just a second to, to refer to my notes. 81 Speed.
I mean, it seems like it's a large entertainment venue, but I just.
I don't know its capacity. I, I know, I mean, if you read the, and this, this is just reading from the governor's executive order, it says, outdoor and indoor large entertainment venues with capacity of 2,000 or more. I don't know how many people their capacity is, and so, I mean, that's probably a question that would require.
Okay, so we need some clarification on that. Okay. I think you did reference churches, though, but can you just reiterate that?
Sure. Yeah, and I'll go into slightly more detail. I, I think the, the way to read this in light of, you know, the governor had some litigation at, at the federal court with a couple churches in Kansas. I think the way to read that is that, as I mentioned, I think a church could have multiple groups of 10 or more people, not just a church, but I think any public gathering could, as long as there's social distancing of at least six feet between those groups of 10 or less. That would appear to be consistent with the provisions from the federal court's temporary restraining order. And what happened in that case was each of the churches came up, one of the churches had 17 protocols, is what they were referred to as, that they said they would abide by. And the other church had seven, and the judge approved both of those. And, and just one of those conditions really for each of them was to maintain the six-foot distances between groupings of people. So I think that portion of the governor's order is kind of a nod to both what, you know, it'd be consistent with that temporary restraining order that occurred there. And so I, I think that the answer to that is that, you know, it would be, you know, obviously, some of the churches, I think, are going to, and religious institutions are going to continue to stream services and things like that. But I don't think there, you know, there's no longer a, a cap at 10 people or less as there had been in the governor's prior executive order. Do you have any other questions?
I do not have any other questions at this time.
If I could, you know, just second, Commissioner Dennis. So we're going to probably have some more public information world, but, so the executive order is, is basically covers a lot of phase one, but the, the plan that is on their website goes into the specifics about one, phase two, and phase three of what you addressed.
That's correct. And, and, I'm a lawyer, so I probably focused on the executive order and the legal requirements behind it. I think there's probably two things to mention. One is I didn't focus as much on some of the health best, public health best practices that maybe either Dr. Menz or Adrian could speak to better, but there's certainly some of that stuff that's contained in the overall plan. There's about a 30-page document the governor's office has that I think each of you has in front of you that is the overall plan, but the executive order that I summarized in a lot of detail is really what, what goes, the reason I focused on that is that's what goes into place on Monday, and I think that's what a lot of the questions are coming up about from local businesses and individuals.
And because, and then I'll get to you, Commissioner Dennis, and because if any, if any business is not restricted in phase one, that's listed specifically, their industry, then it's okay for them to be open. Retail shops, restaurants.
Every, as long as every bit, yeah, essentially, a business can be open unless it's specifically listed, or there, there was the one comment in there about if, if there's close contact between the business and the person. I mean, like, an example would probably be like a massage business.
But don't they, doesn't she identify that?
She didn't actually, I don't think she said massage, no.
On page three?
Um, she didn't in the executive order, but it would be the kind of business that, you know, talks about where close contact cannot be avoided, and that's, that's a pretty.
Close contact, okay.
Sure.
So that's, that's the vague area.
Yeah, there, and there aren't a lot, I think she identified most of the businesses that would come to mind for me. I can't think of many other businesses that would have close contact besides the one she's listed.
So if I can reemphasize to the public, May 4th, under the, her order, and thus we changed something here, under her order, a restaurant, a breakfast restaurant can open early Monday morning, can have people in groups of 10, space six feet, and then a couple could sit next to them, space six feet, can, can sit next to them, sit next to them.
That's correct, Chairman. And something I didn't mention is, there is a part in the executive order where it talks about you could either have the six feet of distancing, but it also would allow a restaurant as an alternative to the six feet of distancing. Let's say you had two booths that were, you know, adjoining one another, they could put a physical barrier in between in case they wanted to be at full capacity, but have that protection for virus spread. So I, I think there's an alternative option there for a restaurant if they would like to do so.
Okay. So Commissioner Dennis, and then we'll go to Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think, looking at the emails I received this morning, and I think they probably went to all the commissioners from the way it looked like, we had pretty well the identical email from dental hygienists, probably eight or nine emails this morning, and they are all concerned about opening Monday morning. So I'm trying to figure out how to answer those eight or nine emails I got this morning. So the correct answer is for them to, to review this website that is in this document you gave. Right. I don't know what kind of guidance to give them other than that.
Okay, and I'll, I'll try to answer that. The way I would understand it at this point, keep in mind, this has been moving very quickly, you know, and haven't had a chance to analyze all of these issues, but the, I, I believe that dental services would be encompassed within medical services, which is an essential function under the governor's executive order. The, under the industry guidelines, which is one of the documents in front of you, at the bottom of page one, it talks about best practices, you know, for dental offices that KDHE's come up with. And so, you know, I think that, my understanding is those businesses could reopen on May 4th, but, you know, there's a recommendation they would follow those practices. But to, to your question, your specific question was about you have constituents perhaps who are dental hygienists or employees at a business, and it's not unique to dental, dental offices, there, a question's going to come up. I, I think the way that we've often handled that question is, you know, I guess one thing is they could obviously talk to their employers, talk to their HR department if they have an HR department at their employer's office. You know, if they're concerned about returning to work, you know, there are best practices and guidelines in for both employers and individuals, but it is a very, you know, people returning to work in this, in these situations, there's a lot of legal questions that come up, whether you're the employer or the individual, you know, will I qualify for unemployment, those types of things. And so, I mean, one of the things we've often said is that folks should seek, you know, try to talk to legal counsel to get their own advice on this issue. But in terms of how the business should run, the governor's order does include some best practices and things like that. But does that answer your question, Commissioner Dennis?
Okay, well, I think I've got enough. I can send an answer back, and I'm sure that the other commissioners are going to have a, going to do that. One more question that I've got, and I'll pass it off to Commissioner Cruz. My concern is enforcement. Who's responsible? And what, what does the Board of Health, is there a responsibility there? I have not liked the snitch page that we've got on our website. So where, where do we go from here?
Well, I think, I think that as a board, you can give us some direction as staff, and I'd certainly defer to the, the county manager on that. I guess one thing I would say to the enforcement piece is, you know, there's no requirement that we would have to have the, the page where people report complaints. There, the ultimate enforcement agencies on this are law enforcement agencies. There, violations of the executive order would still be a Class A misdemeanor under state law. So police officers, sheriff's officers would be able to write citations if a business was in violation of this order, just like under the, the stay-at-home order. And so, you know, one, one thing that could just be is that this, these things are just reported to law enforcement. That's, I, I think over the past month or so, the county had been receiving these complaints, and there was a lot of confusion in the community as to what, you know, what, what applied, what didn't. You know, there was a lot of, there were a lot of moving issues. There's probably less with this, although there is still confusion. I think that a lot of, there's less businesses, probably less businesses that are unclear as to where they stand at this point, I would think, as opposed to a month ago. But I, I think certainly there's, there's, we would take guidance as staff from whatever the Board of County Commissioners would want us to do or not do.
If a business has a question, they can still contact if we need to get clarification on the governor's order. Do they go through our legal office to get clarification on the governor's order?
I, I don't think we've, I mean, I think that's another thing that we could take guidance from, and I defer to my, to my boss, Mike Poon, as the county counselor on that. I think we could help advise staff. The governor's executive order did put us in the position as a local government, it didn't say county, it says local government, as to whether something's an essential function. It didn't say whether local governments have to answer the question of whether the business can operate under this order or not, because there may be some businesses that are not essential functions, but there's a question as to whether they can operate under this order or not. You know, my view, the, the best place to propose those questions would be the governor's office. And that, you know, if we're talking about true enforcement, the, the law enforcement would, would be the ones who would be able, whether it's sheriff's, sheriff's offices or city police departments would be the best suited people to address those items. Thank you, Justin. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. So just for a clarification, earlier when we were talking about breakfast establishments, you said groups of 10. So the first, that, that would mean that only one group could go in there under this order if it's a group of 10, because there's only 10 mass gathering limit.
Well, the, the gathering limit, based on how things were, you know, up until May 4th, I think your understanding on that could be correct, but, but now they've changed it to where as long as those groups of 10 are at least six feet apart, you can have multiple groups of 10. And I think I, I saw, yeah, there was an article that talked about bubbles of 10 people. And I mean, it's kind of what, how you visualize is you can have all groupings of 10, but they have to be separated. And so, you know, the example of the booth, unless there's some sort of physical barrier dividing the two booths, what the exec, the way I read the executive order is to say that they, they couldn't have two booths occupied next to each other, you know, maybe with the exception of they all came from the same household and they were at less than 10, you know.
Okay, so, so it's not a matter of one location having a total number of 10 people, it's 10 people per, per group. Okay, that, I think we need, that's, that's a little confusing, I think.
I can understand.
Not to interrupt, but that's some of the questions that I've been getting specifically. So I think it's important, that's why I suggested it, and I think you're clarif, so typical restaurant four, skip a table four, skip a table four. There's no, there's no percent of occupancy in this order, like, has been discussed.
No, there, there is nothing in this order that limits occupancy based on percentage. I've seen states and, and other places, even in, in the Kansas City area that based it on percentages, but I, I don't, I didn't see anything in the executive order that based it on occupancy rates.
So Commissioner Cruz, I'm sorry, let me continue, please.
No, that's fine. I just, I think that's something that maybe we should clarify, because that's kind of confusing. So if, so if we're talking about how we're going to interpret this for our community, then I think that's one thing that we need to talk about. On the lines of enforcement, I don't like the page either where people report. I really don't. I really don't like that page. But how else are we supposed to enforce this if folks aren't complying? I guess that would be a, a good question that we should all discuss, because what are other alternatives to enforcing this if that's not the way? That's my question. Can someone answer that question for me? Or could we at least talk about it?
How about the county manager? He's had some thoughts.
I appreciate the question from Commissioner Dennis and the follow-up by Commissioner Cruz. I think whatever our solution is on this, I would like to keep the 911 system out of it. I don't think that that's the, that we necessarily would instruct citizens to directly call police or sheriff. I think there has to be, if, if there, if it is the will of the board, there has to be a litmus in between that. And I think it's, it's, it's a, it's a good discussion to have. Whenever we set as a Board of Health or when the governor sets an order, there is an expectation of compliance for, for the social good. I, and I don't know if I've done it in a meeting, but I compare it to, to drunk driving. If I was only going to hurt myself drunk driving, I don't think that people would care as much, but if the fact is I'm going to hurt other people by that action, this is very similar in nature. If we get radical non-compliance with what are pretty easy-to-follow guidelines, they can not only hurt themselves, but they could hurt others, and that's why I think it's a, it's a germane discussion on what do we do with non-compliance issues. I, I, I wait for the will of the board on this. We will administrate whatever you direct, but I would like it not to be 911. I would like it to be some intermediate type of solution that we could run through another staff procedure, a non-emergency line, or some kind of protocol, because I just fear that if we direct citizens, because I, I know how many we got the last time when, when we had to stay at home, it was hundreds, thousands, and I don't want to foist that upon the 911 system, which is already busy enough with, with emergency. So whatever the commission decides, we will abide by, and I think it's a worthy discussion to have, because I think no matter what happens on Monday, the phones are going to ring and we, we need good, clear, concise messaging on, on how to tell our community, so.
Another option you'd said, said before, and then Commissioner O'Donnell, please, was that, typical to what restaurants were inspected today by, by the, who, who inspects restaurants quarterly, or?
KDHE.
KD, yeah. And then, for compliance, and then they, then they show the complaints, and then it's published in the, in the newspaper or published online, so that, that's another option, that we have a complaint, we recognize it to the, to the company, and, and then let them respond back and then basically release it to, you know, release it to the, to the media, something like that, if, if we find that it, that they were out of compliance, similar to that is another option. But Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, at the conclusion of this meeting, I'm going to make a motion that we take that snitch page down. It, it feels way too much like a police state that's not America. I, I don't know where the rest of the commission is, but I don't like it. It's been very unsettling for me since the beginning. As we're moving past, the stay-at-home order is expiring. I would like that to go down on Monday as well. It, it, it encourages people turning in their neighbors, it encourages snitching. I, I just, I have a real, real problem with that. We are not a police state. So if by the end of this meeting, the manager can be texting the sheriff to see if there's another line that people might want to call, a, a phone number, but, but as far as a snitch page and stuff, it's, it's wrong. So I'll be making that motion just as, and so, Mr. Counselor, if you could get me a motion ready to get that page taken down, I would like that before the end of the meeting.
I will do that.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see which one was first. Commissioner Cruz, I think you were, and then Commissioner Howell.
Thank you. I think we're all in agreements that we, nobody wants the page, but we have to have an alternative. So just, we have to make sure that we have something in place or people aren't going to comply. There's going to be no, if it's a free-for-all, what are those, what are the consequences to the public health for those who don't comply? And to manager's point, you know, this, this isn't really about, this is about infecting others, not knowing that you have this virus and infecting others. So I think, I get it, and I think we've all don't like it, but we have to come up with, with an example of, of what we can do. And if it's a phone number, I guess, how is that really any different than a website? How is that any different? Somebody calling or somebody writing, it's kind of the same thing.
Well, I, I hear what you're saying. Maybe putting it in writing is better to maybe come to the commission and then we forward it. I don't know for sure. Commissioner Howell?
I have a, I have a question and a comment. So my first question would be, in, in light of the, what we're going to call the snitch line, I guess, have we continued to get phone calls to 911 during this time? I'm curious if that's been shut down completely or if we're still getting calls.
I, I think that we tried to craft the message on the early side to not call 911, and we pushed them instead through to our call center, and Anna Meyerhoff's team has been fielding those calls, and it was, I don't know the exact number setting here, but it was several hundred calls on the first days. Whenever we change something, there's a lot of question, and then it would trickle off and, and become less. But I would anticipate, even with the governor's order, that on Monday, there's going to just be a lot of questions. I just, you know, people are. I just, you know, people are trying to abide by this, so I think we'll.
Well, to be clear, if they, if they call 911 during this whole time, you said they'd be referred to the call center, and they'd probably would take the call over there, or they would refer them to the, to the webpage where they could make their report there. But 911 has been, probably has continued to get calls, I would assume.
I, I, I think so, Commissioner, but I think Alora would tell us that it would have been much worse had the commission not taken the action and given some direction, and giving people a mechanism, a solution on what to do, other than 911.
I, I think no matter what we do, people are still going to have, you know, they're still going to do the, maybe the wrong thing, maybe not the way we would want them to do it. They might, they might call 911 to report this, even though maybe another number, they didn't know there was another number. So people will do what they're going to do, and that's fine. I think that we can handle it to the, you know, I have no doubt that 911 is going to pick up the phone and they'll, they'll, they'll manage the call. But I would just say something I said again last Wednesday, I think that we need to trust our citizenry. I do believe the vast majority of, of our population is interested in doing the right thing, and they're going to be in compliance. I'm not worried about most of the people. I think that the very few that might do something that's not in accordance with the govern, the governor's executive order, probably will not create, by themselves, will probably not create a huge spike in our data. The reality is, we're, we're watching what's happening at the hospitals. No matter what happens in the population, the hospital data is what matters. And if we see a spike, then we have a problem to solve. But if we, the spike at the hospitals, I should say, that we can't handle, then we have a problem we need to address. But until that happens, I think we need to, to trust our citizenry, and so I would, I would like to support Commissioner O'Donnell's motion to remove that line when he makes that motion. I think that's the right answer. Thank you.
Okay.
Chairman.
Oh, yes.
I just, Alora and I are texting back and forth, excuse me. She said, we are still getting calls, but not as many. We are directing them to the line that was established to report non-compliance, and she, in her estimation, it would have been must, much worse for 911 had we not done that. So that's her statement on this.
Okay, that, that's helpful. And I'd like to remind us and in the public that this, the intent of the gathering from, from my conversations with the governor's staff is that, that they really wanted these mass gathering numbers, really wanted to, to avoid the chili cook-off and the, and the standing around, really mass gatherings. As a matter of fact, we got a picture of one, like in a park, that, that, they want to avoid the big barbecue stuff, things like that. And it is 10, and it is just for two weeks, a minimum of two weeks, you could extend it. But, so it is to avoid that, so the specifics that we've been talking about is, is kind of business-friendly and, and retail shop-friendly, and, and, and so we'll have to, yes, Tom, you have something else to add?
Maybe Commissioner, at this point, could we have Tanya Cole come in and talk about just kind of what we did historically? So, I mean, we keep referring to it as a snitch line. Could maybe Tanya just talk about what the line was designed to do, and how we set it up, and kind of some of the numbers? If we could just give her one minute, since this is the topic.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners.
Enforcement is kind of a.
Just to speak to the, the line and the website, we had three mechanisms for various folks in the community to contact us if they had a complaint that they wanted to register. So there was the online mechanism that they could use, the website form. They could also call in to a general number and register a complaint, and then they also had a email mechanism that they could use. And so I tried to pull up the email as I was coming over, and I couldn't grab it real quick, but we've had complaints, and I cannot remember the number, but I think we've had over, probably a thousand in the complaint numbers. So I just want to give you that information. So if there's any questions that you have, I'd be glad to, to speak to that.
Okay, yeah.
Question.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Is there, does the governor's office have a local line, a 316 number, or is it 785?
I don't know if they have a local line on that.
Because I think that's where people should start directing their complaints to the governor, instead of to us.
And, and as I understand, as, as folks were calling the governor's line, the governor's office were referring them to, to the local county. And so we, so we were receiving those calls, and so that's where we started to try to answer some of those questions.
I get that, but as far as I'm concerned at this point, this is the governor's order.
I understand.
These are the governor's directions. This isn't Sedgwick County's. At least, that's going to be what I support, that say, well, there's, you know, I don't, I don't want further restrictions, so if the governor wants this, she can own it, she can have it, let's, let's have everybody call her, because she's the governor of Kansas, and we're just, you know, Sedgwick County Commissioners, and, and we're, you know, I, I'm, I'm going to encourage people to just call the governor. I know that she's been very busy recently. Not going to attack her personally, but the unemployment line still is a disaster. I've had dozens of people email me, call me, they can't, still can't get their unemployment. A lot of hairdressers, for example, and, but I'm, I'm going to let her have this, this is, this is her project, and I'd like that snitch line to be the governor's office number, or if they have a local office here, we'll just direct them there. So thank you, Tanya.
Yes, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. You know, this, we talk about handling this at the local level. I mean, we have to execute things, and so we have to be responsible here for our citizens, helping people, help mitigating problems, help people understand how to get through this together. I don't think that's the most responsible thing to do, is to send people in our community to Topeka. I think that we have a responsibility here as Sedgwick County Commissioners. We're not just Sedgwick County Commissioners, as Commissioner O'Donnell has stated. We have a responsibility to take care of our citizens here, and I think that we can get through this, and we, we must take responsibility and, and do it together.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hear what Mr. Stoltz says about that this is as important as someone that's a DUI, and I believe that. Both cases can cause people to die if you violate that. But the problem is, we don't have a snitch line, if that's what we want to call it today, for DUIs. It, it's taken care of by law enforcement. When they see something wrong, my law enforcement steps in. And I don't know why that we need a special line for this, because we don't have special lines for every other violation that can cause somebody to be killed. We just need to say, hey, if, if law enforcement sees something wrong, law enforcement ought to take care of it. It's, it's not, it's not something to put together a special program or project for. And I totally agree with the, with the manager, that this is as important as DUI. I, I truly believe that, because people can die. If we get groups together and they start spreading it, it'll spread very rapidly. But I, I don't know that the mechanism we have in place now is the right one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, okay. Okay, well, Tanya, thanks for the, the past. I know the, the group has fielded calls and logged them, and I can't, do you, do you remember the numbers on these quote snitch lines, calls? One time you told us 100 and some.
And that's the email I was trying to pull up. I will get that information and get that to you.
So we had a, I think it was maybe a couple hundred calls, and you actually sent out about, we sent out about 50 or so letters?
162 letters is how many we sent out.
162 letters, okay. And those were advisory letters that said that it, we had a complaint, and, and we looked into it, and we felt it's worth sending you a letter advising you that you're not in compliance?
Correct. And then we also gave them the opportunity, if they wanted to explain a little bit further on their business, that they had that opportunity to email us and give us further explanation.
Right, okay. Okay, well, Commissioner.
Just curiously, what, how long did that process take? So if someone was to make a, a report, how long would it take before them to receive that letter?
From our office, is that what you mean? How long did it take?
Receive it through the website. How off, how long until that business or whatever activity would receive a letter from the county?
Oh, we turned it around pretty quick. So we would receive that letter, we would turn, we would receive that complaint, turn around a letter the next day. They should receive it, I mean, within 24 hours. We gave them the opportunity to contact us, and then ask them to respond, and we responded within 24 hours when we received an email from them with an explanation. So I would say anywhere between probably three to four days, we were turning around information, between the complaint, getting it to the business, responding to the business, and then trying to resolve that.
Have we ever dispatched law enforcement to any of these places because of non-compliance?
Never dispatched. We provided information to law enforcement as far as the complaints that we received, but nothing beyond that, as far as I know, as, as far as dispatching law enforcement.
I just, I just, you know, I, I understand that people want a place to go to report this stuff, but say you walk into a restaurant and you see 12 people sitting there, how do you know they're not in the same family? You know, that might, that might happen. I, I have families contact me and say, what happens if we have 11 people in our family? Can we not go to a restaurant? Of course, the answer is yes, you can. But how do, how does somebody else know, looking at that, that there's people of one family? So it just creates an opportunity for someone to turn somebody else in, and it's very dynamic. The situation will change 30 minutes later when that family gets up and leaves. So meantime, we've got someone who's making a report, as if they think there's going to be, you know, law enforcement licensed siren to this place to arrest somebody for non-compliance. It doesn't really make sense. And so I, I think, I think there's a lot of this that just frankly, it's such dynamic situations that this, this line really is not practical, it is not effective, and I, I don't see there's a lot of value here. Now, if someone's getting a, a back alley haircut, are we going to turn that in? You know? It's a good question. You know, that's what I'm, I'm hearing that, that's what's going on. You know, people are trying to do that type of thing, so, you know, I don't know that we ought to be, if the hospitals have their, their situation under control, I think that this line has no real purpose.
Exactly. Okay, all right. And pardon that, I think that was kind of a clever.
I understand. I, I make that up. I'm not making that up. That's exactly what people are asking me, like, I have to call somebody.
I have had some people tell me.
An underground haircut, you know, I'm thinking, I don't know.
I know, I've had some people tell me that they've talked to their barber and come to the back door and.
I know.
So anyway, okay, let's not degrade further. I'm part of that. Okay, so thank you again, Tanya. That's very helpful to have that history, and, and we'll go, oh, Commissioner Cruz, sorry.
Thank you. So we have been doing a lot of communicating with Johnson County. How are they handling this?
That's a good question. I'm not sure if I know the answer to that, Commissioner Cruz.
I talked to, I talked to the chairman, and have you talked to Chairman Ed Iler lately? Not enforcement, you mean?
No, enforcement, no.
I, I, I think, I'll, I'm going to defer to, I think somebody watched a little more than I did, but I think overall, the Johnson County has, because of their geographic location on the state line adjacent to Missouri and Jackson County, as well as Wyandotte, and because they have a different dynamic with all their cases, that they were going to, I guess they have to accept, in, in a way, their, the governor's order, but they were going to extend their, their, a local stay-at-home order for two weeks, maybe? 10 days? Something like that?
I think till the 11th.
Said, and I think Michael, or Commissioner O'Donnell, you watched that? Do you have anything to add to that?
They, they were extending it, their stay-at-home order, I think, till a week from Monday, so I think, yeah, till the 11th. But I think their, their market is a lot different than ours. They've got a much larger metropolitan area, they've got bleed over from the state of Missouri, so it's all, it, it is quite a bit different than, than we are here in Wichita.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
So I have heard multiple times, a few commissioners here talk about, though, how we would want to stay in lockstep with them. That's been said a couple times, and I wonder why we would not be doing that now? Does anybody want to address that?
From my perspective, they have been very helpful in, in us working in tandem for original guidelines, so we didn't have to recreate my conversations. They did some things with their outdoor, for instance, I know for a fact, they, they had a, a, they had their opinion about golf that was different than ours, but they had their own guidelines about golf. They had a, maybe a couple other things that, so we chose, in my conversations with, with their chairman, is that, and I would say, well, we're looking at maybe doing this. He says, yeah, if I was in your position, probably that sounds good. I think Commissioner Dennis, did you, we called, you called him about something that he helped clarify that?
Yes, we've talked to him a couple times, and there have been clarifications that we've been able to, to help when we're incorporating the different ideas in our, our different policies, but I have not talked to him about enforcement. We can give him a call and find out what they're doing there.
We can do that. But, but true lockstep, we, we haven't been like total mirror, but it's been, obviously we're the population centers. I mean, they, it was helpful to talk to them about, with, with our finance, to talk to them about applying as a $500,000 or more community for the federal relief program under the CARES Act. I mean, so there's, there's communication, no question, with our, our friends in Johnson County. Okay. All right. I think we have Dr. Minz in the, in the, in the house, and, Doctor, you want to address us, and I don't know if we have any questions for him. I'm not trying to prolong the meeting or add to it as much as I'm trying to make sure that, that we have everything covered that we can. So, Dr. Minz, please.
Dr. Minz, I want to thank you personally. You've always been available if I call on the cell phone, and we've had some great discussions, and I know that you've been in contact with, with your peers, at least in some of the larger counties, and, and Topeka, and, and.
Johnson, Wyandotte, yeah.
Right, so, okay.
Gerald Minz, Medical Officer for Sedgwick County. I don't really have a lot of prepared comments to make you all. I would say that I feel very humbled by the response I feel we have gotten from the citizens of this county in terms of responding to the restrictions they've been living under. Indeed, a lot of the things that the population has done were not required by the previous order. A number of things were done before the order was even issued, and a lot of the churches had quit meeting as, as groups before Governor Kelly's order came out. A lot of the retail places have been doing restrictions that weren't even in the order. So I really respect what this people, this county have done, and I think because of that, and because we got on it fairly early, we were able to keep our numbers in better control than our sister counties in northeast Kansas. I know our number of deaths is much lower, our number of cases are lower, even though our population is very similar, and we're, we're lower than Wyandotte, and their population's a lot lower than ours. So I think some credit is due to the population here, a number of the things that they've done, they've done because they want to. We talked about the stay-at-home order, that is very difficult to enforce. And yet I know a lot of citizens just took it to heart that they didn't want to be exposed to this, and they did it on their own, they didn't require anybody coming to their door and telling them to do it. Now, was it 100%? I don't think anything like that's possible to get 100%. So I, I do have to give credit to them, I also have to give credit to our healthcare personnel. I think they have to take some responsibility for keeping our death rate low. I've never quite understood why our death rate is lower than Wyandotte and Johnson County, not to criticize them, but I've been very gratified by the fact that I think we've only had nine deaths, and I believe seven of those came from our nursing home outbreaks, which are, many of those patients were really sick before they even presented to the healthcare facilities. So our hospitals have been very responsible, they have taken this very seriously, and I think now, as I think you know, they feel like they're, they've got it under control, and that they're ready to start trying to encourage people to come to the hospital with other conditions, because one of the unintended consequences of all this was, people became scared, and they were fearful that they came to the emergency rooms, that they might get exposed to somebody, even though that was unfounded. I mean, the hospitals were good about segregating these patients who might be COVID-19s. Physician officers have told me the same thing, their, their appointments have just gone down half of what they used to be, and all they can figure out is patients are just afraid they're going to get this disease by sitting in their waiting room. And because of that, they're doing a lot more tele-video visits, and trying, they also try to segregate people with respiratory illnesses in their waiting rooms from the other patients, so. So I, I think we, we should be proud of what our healthcare community and our citizens have done in this state. You could, I could get up here and I could pick apart the governor's order and find some things I might not think, well, I would have done it. some things I might not think, well, I would have done it. Some things I would say I pretty much agree with. But I, overall, I think it's a pretty good plan. There's no perfect plan. And I've always said that, I hear people talk about experts on this disease, you know, no one knew about this disease until four months ago.
Right.
It's hard to be an expert about something that never existed in the world. And we're all learning as we go. I think the governor referred to that last night. There are a lot of things we don't understand about this virus yet. As we get more cases, we have more patients in the hospitals, our researchers get more information, are able to study these patients that have this, we'll know more as the year goes on. But right now, there's just a lot of stuff we don't know. So are there any questions that you have of me?
Oh, Commissioner Howe, thank you. Dr. Minz, want to say thank you for being here today. And I know you've been in a very difficult position since the beginning of this. I want to say I appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
And the elephant in the room, for me at least, is we want to just be absolutely clear. The, there's been some concern, we know that there was some letters sent out that were advocating to you that you would issue a stay-at-home order for Sedgwick County.
Mm-hmm.
Take us out to May the 11th. And I'm not sure what that was based on, but can you please be clear as whether that is your intention in any way, or are you planning essentially recommending, if you will, the governor's order at this point?
Like I referred to, the stay-at-home order we've had has been successful because the citizenry has taken it to heart, not because anyone told them they had to do it.
Correct.
I firmly believe that we should still encourage people to stay at home as much as possible. I don't think that necessarily needs to be an order, because I think most of those people will continue to do it, because they've been doing it. Now, if the governor had put that in her order, I wouldn't, I wouldn't argue with her about it. It's one of those things, it's, I think we're going to have the population comply, whether it's in the order or we just suggest it. Now, I strongly feel that the people are at high risk, should firmly stay at home. The people that we've listed, age weight, other comorbid conditions, organ failure, chronic organ failure, medications that suppress their immunity, all those patients need to be very cautious.
Thank you. I think it's a good answer. And just wanted to, since you are our health officer for Sedgwick County, can you please talk a little bit about, I'm not sure how much you want to disclose, or how much you can, how much you can talk about, but can you please kind of describe our hospital's situation? Are they, are they managing this pretty well? Do they have a lot, plenty of PPE in staff and beds and ventilators? Or is there continued challenges up there? There's concerns about us hitting some limit?
To the best of my knowledge, there's no deficiency on ventilators, but I haven't checked with them recently. I know that, I haven't checked on them since last week, but last week, they were feeling that their volume was certainly manageable. And actually, they want more of these other conditions coming in, because they feel like patients are waiting way too long, and they're coming in with conditions that are beyond repair. And they just feel bad that people have been doing that. I think there is still concerns about the protective equipment. It's not that they don't have it. They wish they had more. I know that some of the doctors feel like they're having to wear gowns a little longer than they would prefer, and masks longer than they prefer. But I don't think anyone is to the point like they have been in New York, where they, they have to wear a mask for a week. So I know, I heard one of the hospitals had ordered a large shipment of masks, and I was told it was to be arrived here soon. But, so it's manageable. It's not as comfortable if they'd like it, but they're, they're handling it. And I would add, I don't think they would, can start doing elective surgeries again if they had inadequate protective equipment, because obviously, they're going to have to use protective equipment for their elective surgery. So that tells me that they feel like they've got enough, they can start doing those procedures again.
And certainly, they have the, they have the right to choose to do that or not under the governor's order. They can choose to do it, or if they feel like they have concern, they don't have to. And I'll say thank you for being here and for your, for your answers. I appreciate you very much. And I know you've been in a tough position, so please feel appreciated by, by the commission.
Thank you, Dr. Howe. Mr. Howe?
Thank you, Commissioner Howe. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. What would be an appropriate measure for a threshold should we see an additional surge of this virus? What, can you speak to that a little bit?
Well, I'm glad you asked that question, because I was planning on bringing it up. I think the most important things we need to look at are the hospital admissions and the ICU patients and the death rate. I say that because those are the most serious conditions. We have to anticipate that the number of cases per week is going to go up, because we are doing more testing, that we're identifying the people who are not at the hospital or sick, they're the people who are driving into our drive-throughs, maybe have some symptoms, maybe not. We plan to do some more testing on people with not much in the way of symptoms. We want to test more, because we want to find those people before they get sick, and before they give it to someone else, identify them, get into quarantine. We haven't had enough tests or swabs to do that. Finally, we have been assured by KDE, we have received more. And I tell you, as we test more, we're going to find more of those asymptomatic people. So we have to be careful not misinterpret that, that the cases are going up, oh, my gosh, things are bad. You have to look at how many screenings we did that day. I think Wednesday, we did 63 screenings. We had 63 cases go through, not positives. And then the next day, I think we were up to 90. So we're, we want to get that up to 150, maybe 200 a day. So I think we, we made all the restrictions, because we didn't want to overwhelm the hospitals. And we have done that. And that's what we continue to need to monitor very closely, look at what the hospital's census is doing, and how many in the ICU, and how many deaths we're having. And so far, we've been successful. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Could you repeat? So, Dr. Minz, you said there's three things that, that you're concerned with, that would, as you say?
I would say the, I don't want to ignore the number of cases, but I have to realize that has been adjusted for the number of screenings we're doing.
Sure. I agree.
We need to look at our hospital volume. We need to look at not just the volume of COVID-19 patients in the hospital, but how many are in the ICU, because that's where the ventilators are consumed, and we have to look at our deaths. Now, I'm not saying ignore the other numbers, but those are the critical numbers, because our hospitals, we can't let them get to the point that they just can't handle it anymore.
Right.
And I, I would say even if we see a significant progressive increase in those, not just one day, but it just keeps going up, that's when we're probably going to have to reevaluate things.
Okay.
But we will see more cases. We want more cases found before they're sick.
Right. Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Can we talk about testing for a sec? I think you brought up a really great point. So is there, and Adrian, maybe you can speak to this, or anyone else, maybe last Wednesday, this Wednesday, we talked about testing sites. Would that be a recommendation that you guys will be bringing back to us about where additional sites would be, and what makes the most sense, given we already have health departments set up? Can you, can you speak about that, please?
Good morning, Commissioner, and Board of Health, Adrian Byrne, Health Director. And, and we already have been testing at East 9th since the very beginning. It was more of a walk-in basis. And so we were just looking at possibly expanding that a little bit to make it more known in the community versus people just walking in and, you know, testing them sporadically. So access points, more access points are always positive to try to reach as much of the community as possible. At this point, it is, our main is West Central, and then just very sporadically at East 9th. If we had the ability to do mobile, it'd be great to go around the, the community. But right now, it is mainly West Central, and just a handful at, at East 9th.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yes, Dr. Minz?
Just want to add, we are collaborating with our partners at the KU Medical Center. They have a staff up there that are looking at the curves, total cases, deaths, everything. And they're comparing it to between the various counties in the states. So we are working with them to look at our numbers, and we have been doing, and we will continue to do that.
Okay. Good information. Okay. Mr. Papun, can I put you on the spot for a minute? So thanks from Justin. So to be clear, there's a, there's the legal executive order number 2029.
That's correct, sir.
Yes. There's, there's a reference in the executive order 2029 to a whole slew of guidelines for businesses.
That's true.
And then there's the plan, the governor's plan, that, that goes further than just phase one. It goes to the intent for phase two, three, four, assuming things are normal. And if they're abnormal, she can come back and, and.
Yeah. And Justin can speak to this, but I assume that she will issue another executive order, assuming the legislature continues to give her that authority, if she's going to implement the other phases of the plan. But Justin may want to comment on that as well.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
Okay. So at the end of phase one, or near the end of phase one, if things are normal, she would have to issue another executive order to go to phase two?
That, that would be my understanding, Chairman. And she, I don't think she indicated in executive order 2029, you know, went a timeframe for when she would do that. But I would imagine, she kind of, you know, probably a week or so ago, said she would announce last night's plan late this week. So I imagine she'll, a handful of days beforehand, she'll, you know, announce what, based on what the data is showing, whether she's intending to move on to phase two or not, on the timeframe that's indicated. I would think so for the business community, and so people have some certainty.
Okay.
Yeah, I would assume, Mr. Chairman, that part of the reason might be that she's going to look very closely at what phase one does in terms of the spread of the pandam- pandemic, or the lack of spread, and issue orders, you know, accordingly. I mean, she would have to then issue another order, follow-up order, you know, closing phase two and three if things started getting worse. And so that could be one of the reasons she's only doing in phases.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Minz?
So you asked me what I was going to be looking at. I know the governor said she's developed her own metrics. I don't know what those are, but I hope to find out, to see how close they are to ours. And she is going to use those metrics to decide whether we go to phase two or to phase three. I just learned that recently, so I don't know what she's using the measure. But we certainly will compare what she's doing to what we're doing, and take any advice that she can give us about, maybe there's other metrics we should be looking at.
So I would say if, or I'm going to ask if you, so if we see problems in other parts of the state, then the, or let's say, everything's good in other parts of the state, and we have a, have an escalation, then she may say, go to phase two, and we could say, and you could say, well, in Sedgwick, we ought to watch out for this or that.
Right.
Through an order or whatever.
Right. And there's, as we've seen with Ford County and southwest Kansas, there's going to be differences throughout the state. I mean, right now, southwest Kansas is really struggling, and.
Right. Commissioner Cruz, you have a question?
Yeah, you know, given since we do have a large hospital system, that we get, we get other patients from, you know, a large area, I think that's something to take into consideration. Can you just reiterate what your recommendations are to this board at this time today?
Well, I don't think I can reiterate, because I don't think I've said it yet.
Okay, well, say it again, please. Say it.
I am comfortable accepting the governor's, I think it's well thought out. She's obviously consulted with a lot of people throughout the state, and a lot of businesses. I said earlier, I could argue with her on a few small points, but I, I think as a package, it's pretty good. So I would, I would, at this time, accept the governor's order. And we will, both at the governor's level and our local level, look at our numbers. And if we see things going the wrong direction, we will have to come back and talk about what we're going to do about it. Is that?
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. I have a question, and maybe our county councillor can answer it best. But I want to know about the court system. Are they still waiting to hear when they're going to reopen from the Supreme Court? Wouldn't that be Chief Justice LeHart?
I'll be happy to check with Judge Gearing, but that's my understanding of what they'll be doing. And they're getting their direction from the Supreme Court on that.
But as of right now, we don't know when the court system reopens?
We'll be happy to check into that today, Commissioner, and let you know if they have any more ideas about when they think they can start.
Okay. If I may continue, Mr. Chair. So my question would be, so somebody gets some type of violation, some type of citation that they're operating, that would have to go through the legal system as well, correct?
Yeah.
So somebody gets a ticket from the Gestapo, and they come in and say, you're operating, and we're going to shut you down. That would have to go through a legal process, correct? And we don't even know when the courts are opening.
And I don't know to the full extent of what the courts are doing. And that doesn't mean we're not still arresting people and issuing tickets and doing those things. It just may be longer until that, that works its way through the entire process.
Yeah. But, but what just concerns me is if people start reopening next week, they get ticketed, or somebody says they can't open, but the courts aren't open, I, I think there's just a lot of confusion out there for these businesses about what this order means if they can't operate. That, I think at some point, we need to get that information out to, out to individuals. So, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
So Commissioner O'Donnell, does that mean that you feel we aren't ready to open?
I feel we need to know when the courts are going to open.
So if we are going to take this recommended action to open everything today, are we going to have that by then?
Commissioner Cruz, we're not operating, opening everything today. The governor's order is very limited.
On, on Monday, this is, if, if we're going to be taking this recommended action, we, we have a lot of, I guess the point that I'm trying to make is you just pointed out that we have a lot of questions that aren't answered.
Thanks to our governor, we have a lot of questions that aren't answered.
I love, okay?
Okay.
Okay. So.
So, anyway. Sorry, we're, we're not adhering to the.
So my question, though.
Okay.
My, my question is, what would be the plan to reopen things with those questions answered? I mean, if we have a couple of motions that could be read, and a couple of options as to what we can do, I think that's a consideration that we need to talk about.
Well, I'm, I'm prepared to entertain a motion. I, I asked Mr. Papun to prepare. I think it's pretty clear, we could accept the, the Governor Kelly's plan. Officially, we don't need to, because it's in place anyway. But we could vote to accept her plan. We could move to accept her plan and ask staff to do whatever, as you're saying. Or we could accept the plan and, with the following restrictions. So I'm not, I'm, if we want to, the second one, would be able to accept the plan and ask the Papun, Mr. Papun, to report back on, on the court system, and ask Mr. Stoltz to report back any, any guideline variances between what our guidelines are versus the state guidelines. And again, the recommended guidelines, they're not mandatory at this point. And so I'm, I think we could make a motion that way. I, I do prefer that, that it's, that it's a, a direct motion and a clear motion. And so.
Chairman?
Mr. Yes.
I'm sorry. I, I failed to mention two things in your response to your question. We do feel like there should be two additional things we would place on the governor's order, more restrictive. They're minor things, but I think I would suggest that we continue our restriction on playground equipment being used, since it's very difficult to sanitize that after each use by different individuals. We are doing that now, but we would like to see that continued. And I don't think she addressed that in her order. And secondly, I don't think it was addressed in her order that we would prefer that the restaurants close their buffets and self-serve services. So, and our convenience stores close their self-service, because, again, those are hard to police. And I actually think that was in the discussion we had last Friday by the Restauranters Association, that that was in their best practices guidelines. So we thought it would be well to, to include those in the governor's order as further restrictions we suggest. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Dennis. I'm sorry. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the things that Dr. Minz started off with at the beginning of his discussion was that there's no perfect plan. And one of the things in my time in the military, at Squadron Officer School, Air Command Staff College, Air War College, they always taught us that there is no perfect plan. But when you go into battle, you have to have a plan. And it's going to fall apart at the first contact with the enemy. But if you don't have a plan at all, you're going to be at a disadvantage. So I, I, I don't know that this is the perfect plan, but it is what we've got, and we've got to go into battle with something. And so it's, it's a, something that they drove into our heads, that go in with some kind of a plan. It may not be perfect. You can modify it as you go. Because once you meet the enemy, you're going to have to modify it. So I appreciate the additions that Dr. Minz added on playground equipment, buffets and convenience stores, self-service. Those would probably be things that we may want to add to, to the plan. But we've got to have something as we move forward. We can't wait for the court systems open to, to start doing things. And that's, that, and I, I understand the concern, and. And that's, that, and I, I understand the concern and the question, but that's something that we can modify as we move forward. Same thing, I don't know what the motion's going to be that comes before us on, on the snitch page, but that's something that we can modify as we move forward. We probably ought to have the staff take a look at what options are available. It might be better than having them call 911 or having this page up on our website. So I appreciate what Dr. Minz said. It just brought back to mind things that were driven into, to me as an officer. And I think it, it is time for us to reopen Kansas again, but there may be some things that we need to add to the order. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we even need to make a motion regarding this order? Or it would just go into effect without action? Is there anything that requires us to take an action?
Mr. Papoon question or Justin question?
I can take a stab at it and Justin, you can do. I, I don't think we need an order just to adopt the governor's order. Her order is going to go into effect Monday, May 4th regardless. But I did think the manager wanted some direction and certainly we can report back some information as well about what staff should be doing and getting information back to, to you that might supplement or augment her order. So.
Okay. Well, Ms. Chair, when you're ready, I do have a motion that I would like to read, at least regarding the snitch page.
Okay. Can we take that motion up afterwards?
Of course.
After we get this done. Commissioner Cruz?
Oh, sorry.
I, I would like to request that we use language like non-compliance rather than the other word that's being used. Also, the term Nazis and using those terms, those are buzzwords that really don't need to be used. I mean, if we're in a professional setting, I think, oh, excuse me, Gestapo is what you said, which refers to that as well. So I think it's important for us to understand that we are, we're in a different time right now. It's time to use professional language. That's what I would recommend to this board since we are a professional body.
Good. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple more clarifications because this has been, some of, some of our email has been around this topic. So I assume that this is similar to the AD1 Speedway. But what about the drive-in theater? Can you please help us understand how this order would apply to the, to the drive-in theater here?
Again, Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Councillor. Let me look at the order real quick, Commissioner Howell. See if I can see. I guess I'd preface any answers I'm giving here by saying, this is me giving my best shot without a lot of preparation, you know, just looking at the order. And also law enforcement would be, who would be tasked with enforcing it. If their opinion is different than mine, that certainly carries the day much more than my opinion would. The, I mean, I, I don't know. You could get into that situation as to whether it's a large entertainment venue. I don't know that, that it's, that's necessarily a venue or not. You could get into very complicated analysis as to whether the, you know, the large entertainment venue, the capacity of 2,000 or more. I'm not sure how many people go to the Starlight Drive-In, for example. You know, I, I think, in my opinion, I, I don't, I think it would be allowed to operate just from the standpoint. It's, it's similar in some ways. I realize this isn't the same thing that you're, that you're quite asking. But there are obviously some similarities between that type of activity and then the, the drive-in religious institution services. You know, churches offered and that you don't have people, it's not like a theater where you have a bunch of people sitting together. And I would imagine there's a bunch of the best practices, things that, you know, a drive-in could do such as, you know, hand sanitizer, you know, maybe not having their concession stands open so as not to encourage spread of COVID-19. There, there's some best practices that I would imagine they could try to abide by. But I, I don't believe this would for sure prohibit a drive-in theater, but that's, that's my best effort right now.
Well, just, just I guess my own thought, the concession side of this seems very similar to a restaurant. You walk up and grab your food to go, so to speak, and go back to your car. So I, I don't know that I, I see that that ought to be necessarily recommended, that we would prohibit them specifically because restaurants are doing very similar things already.
I think that's a good point, Commissioner Howell.
You know, and restaurants have bathrooms. I assume that people, when they visit those restaurants, will use the restroom and there'll be cleaning that will happen. So, you know, I, I think that, again, I, I don't see the drive-in theater as substantially different than, than that. But, and I, and I see that there's a person limit of 2,000 in that case. I don't know how in the world you would, you would enforce that. I mean, unless you're counting people as they go in. Do they have a requirement to count people?
I mean, I, yeah, I mean, from an enforcement standpoint, I mean, I, I think you'd be looking at clear-cut enforcement. I think, like, let's say, for example, I mean, the county owns it, but let's say Interest Bank Arena was like, we're not going to follow this. We're going to have a concert that's going to have a capacity crowd and we're just going to have it. Well, I, I would imagine that's something where law enforcement could enforce that if, if they were doing that, you know. But I think otherwise, you're right, there, there would be some enforcement difficulties or challenges that could present themselves with that.
I, I have some other questions, but I see the councillor Papoon has asked.
I, I think I might interject. We would like the opportunity to scrutinize this in detail. I think that provision, talking about outdoor entertainment venues with a capacity of 2,000, it's not a matter of counting the number of people in. We would be looking at their capacity and making some kind of a reasonable judgment from that. That would, that could very much apply to the outdoor drive-in situation.
But just because they have enough seats or enough, enough spaces for more than 2,000 people doesn't mean that they would have 2,000 if they would self-limit. So again, I, I understand they may have a very large venue, but if they only have 1,900 people there in different, you know, cars that are separate, you know, separate by more than six feet, why would, why would we? I guess, I mean, that, that, that would be in total compliance with what this says.
Yeah, I understand your analysis, Commissioner, the way she has it read, the way the, the order reads though, it talks about venues with a capacity of a certain, and I, I imagine whether it's Cotillion or Wave or anything, they all have capacity measurements. And it's reading if, if, if that venue has capacity of 2,000 or more, they're prohibited at this time, not how many people actually show up.
So that's, and this is exactly why I think that, again, I agree with Commissioner Dennis. There's no such thing as a perfect plan, but there's always questions like this that will pop up. We don't quite know how to interpret some of these things. And so we have to do our best to, to come up with a reasonable interpretation of what this is trying to say. There's a strict, you know, strict interpretation, which I think what you're presenting right now, I think the spirit of the law is that, is that this ought to be allowed, in my, in my opinion. But I'll look at, on page two of the, of the executive order, under 2AI. Let me read the sentence. It says, mass gatherings are defined as instances in which individuals are, are in one location and are unable to maintain six-foot distance. The word unable is a concerning word there because let's say that you go to a restaurant, sit down with someone at the same table. You are able to distance, but you're choosing not to. And again, to me, it's a problematic word. I wouldn't have, I would have preferred not to use that word there because I think what's intended by this is that we would allow people to sit at the same table.
And I would add, on Commissioner Howell, to some of the comments you've made and also what Mike Papoon was saying, is that something I would hope and expect is the governor's office might give some guidance to. It's similar to what they did with her, the governor's stay-at-home order where they had a frequently asked questions website. And, and there's some guidance that they provided to county, the 105 counties around the state to help understand how they were looking at it. I mean, it was, I think it was helpful to the businesses, you know. So that may be something, and I had mentioned it earlier, that, you know, when, when these types of questions come up is I, I think the governor's office, it's the governor's order. So I would hope they would be able to give some guidance, some answers to businesses and event venues who are asking these questions because, you know, there's bound to be some differing interpretations that will be reached on this.
Well, if I understand correctly, since this is essentially a law, we have to, we have to abide the plain language of what's written here. So that's why I have some trouble with, with, if you will, a statewide order rather than a local controlled, created order. Once again, I did some calculations this morning. We have, I believe, 13, 13 counties out of the entire state that actually have more than nine cases of COVID since the beginning of the COVID pandemic. We have 25 counties that have zero cases still. And so I know this is certainly well-intentioned, but when we, when we have a state order, this is the type of thing that happens. I would tell you, there's things that she's prohibiting in this order, but I think there are reasonable, reasonable mitigations. Again, this comes down to risk mitigation. If you had a, a nail salon that wanted to do someone's nails, but they were separated by plexiglass, then, and, and the person providing the, the service was wearing gloves and people washed their hands when it was over, that would be very, very, you, the risk is totally mitigated in that case. And so that's one of those things where I, I don't know that I agree necessarily with exactly what she said here. I think it's a pretty good order, but if we had local control here, I would do things a little bit differently. And so that's, this, my only point is I appreciate the governor's work. She did a great job collaborating with lots of people. And this is a pretty good plan. It's not perfect. And there's things we could do differently, slightly differently. Even Dr. Minz had a couple of recommendations that we would probably bring into our own plan if we were in charge of this thing. But having said that, we are, we are with, we are, we are receiving, if you will, and receiving and filing in the governor's order. We don't really have a choice whether we will accept it or not, so we have to accept it. So thank you for the time. Oh, I do have two other simple questions. How are we going to apply this to Sedgwick County Zoo and Sedgwick County Exploration Place? Because Exploration Place is sometimes called a museum, although I don't, I don't think of it as a classic museum. So please, how do we, how do we apply this to those two places?
And I'll defer if Tom has any, if the county manager has any knowledge of, of any, any ideas on that. I'm trying to see here if there's anything that specifically applies to that. Those, you said the Exploration Place and the Zoo.
Yeah, I think the zoo can handle more than 2,000 people. It's an outdoor venue, so it's entertainment generally. By the strict reading of this, it sounds like it's not allowed.
I know, while, while Justin's researching that, I know the zoo, Dr. Etting and his staff have been talking about this for the last several weeks and they are crafting a plan for a more modest type of opening. I, I think that they understand that they can't do capacity. And I believe Exploration Place is doing the same thing.
Again, I, I know they're doing a great job. I trust their leadership. Their, their plan is excellent. What I've heard about it, I, I think they've done a really good job of mitigating risk. But by the strict reading of this order, it sounds like it's not allowed. So I'm just curious, do we have an interpretation that allows us to open those two venues?
Now, I think there's a, there's a fair question with, if I think about the zoo, as to whether you could categorize that as a venue. I think that's a, I mean, there's multiple buildings, multiple outdoor areas that all comprise together. And at no point in time would you conceivably have 2,000 or more people put together in, in a single venue or in a single location anywhere in the zoo, I don't think. An Exploration Place, I just don't think is, is, would fit into that. And I think it would be, there is a prohibition on theaters, museums and other indoor leisure spaces. And it talks about trampoline parks, arcades, et cetera. But I, I don't, I'm not sure if you would be able to categorize Exploration Place. I'm not sure if that's considered a museum or not. And I, I guess it'd probably be some thought to that. But as to whether they, they fit into that definition, and again, I think Tom talked about what their plans might be. So I, I don't have a firm answer right now for you, Commissioner Howell, on that, but I hope that helps explain the analysis.
I, I, I understand it's difficult and I, that's why I asked the question. I think that the spirit of the law is they ought to be allowed. But the strict reading of this tells me that maybe, that may be problematic venues. And I think the word venue is an okay word, in my opinion. But even in Exploration Place, you have group sizes that might change very dynamically within that location. And it's, it's basically unenforceable, trying to, to limit them to group sizes of 10 spaced by six feet. But generally speaking, the, the spirit of the law is that as long as there's mitigations in place, they encourage hand washing and social distancing and minimizing people breathing on each other and have good practices. I, I think that the spirit of the law is they ought to be allowed to open. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Can you, I guess, the question I have is, you know, under, it's number five, bullet number three. You know, avoid any instances in which groups of more than 10 individuals are in a location and unable to main six-foot distance. So can we go back to, I mean, like AD1 Speedway, for example? I mean, you could have 10 people in 10 groups and not, and you're able to distance because, I mean, it's just like the zoo example. I mean, I, I think there is a lot of confusion here in this. So that, that really kind of concerns me. The other thing, Dr. Minz, if you could speak to, you know, there's been some information floating around air filtration systems in restaurants and the virus spreading through that. Is, can you speak to that at all?
Again, there's a lot about this virus we don't understand. I don't know of any scientific studies on that. I do know there's controversy currently about whether this is mainly sped, spread through large droplets which would even get into the air conditioning circulation versus aerosols which could. And there's still debate over how important aerosols are in the transmission of this virus. I think that's still being sorted out in the scientific community, but today I don't have any absolutes. So we feel pretty sure that large droplets, which usually settle out pretty quickly, are the major source of this being transmitted. That's why we emphasize masks and keeping away six feet. Because in six feet, usually those particles will have descended to the floor. But there is debate and there's probably research being done on whether it stays suspended in the air and can be circulated through your, your ventilation system.
I guess what I'm trying to understand, that the gathering size and limiting gathering size is based on contract or contact tracing transmission ability. You know, I, I have kids and my kids are very friendly. And they, I mean, when you get in groups of people, kids, they run up and hug each other and they, you know, they greet people. And, you know, when you're out and about and we start congregating again, we're going to have people who kind of forget, right? And, you know, things that happen. So, you know, the, the size of gatherings, I took it as 10 in one place total. But this does not read that. And so that, that's kind of where my heartburn comes in is that, you know, if you have three groups of 10, that's 30 people, you're going to, I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm trying to, these, these are the questions that I have in the decision that I'm trying to make right this, you know, right today. And I think it's important for us to, to pay attention to that.
I don't have an absolute answer for you. I would say if you're going to the zoo, you keep your family unit together because their, family units, they're going to be exposed at home, so there's no extra exposure at the zoo. I don't think I'd take a birthday party to the zoo now with kids from four different families.
Yeah.
And, and that's, there's no science behind it. It's just what I speculate would probably be a good idea not to do.
Yeah. Well, I have, I, I do want to say, I, I think this is a good plan. I think that, you know, last night, I, I've read through it a couple of times. But I think the community, there's a lot of questions that still need to be answered. And so, again, something we have to take into consideration. And just blanketly, I mean, are we going to do the playground restrictions and the closing buffets? That, that's a, I mean, that's a clear recommendation from.
Well, according to Mr. Papoon, so we don't have to, to have a motion to accept her plan on anything. Okay.
Some of the other draft motions could be useful if you wanted to direct staff to do something, Mr. Chairman.
Right, okay. Well, I think a lot of the questions actually have, I know there's some that are unanswered, but boy, I think we've answered a lot of questions from calls and texts and everything and emails I had last night and even this morning. The, the defining the 10-person gathering has been very helpful. But there are, you know, it, as I said, it's, it's not perfect, but it, it is a plan. And I, I personally congratulate the governor's staff for, for working as hard with all of the various entities that she referenced last night to try to come up with something. So I'd, I'd be ready to make a motion if, if we're having any more dialogue. I'm leaning towards, I, I won't make it official yet, but I'm leaning towards a motion that, that we, that we, that we accept the plan and instruct the, the staff to, to, to bring back updated information about the courts, the guideline comparisons and options on enforcement, enforcement options is what I'm thinking. So I understand there is the public playground and the self-serve buffet item. That would probably have to be inserted as a other, as an additional restriction to the plan if, if we wanted to go there.
I would support that motion if there was a date attached to it. Is there a date that says when staff is going to get staff back?
Tom, we discussed a little bit. Could you have at least a preliminary report by Wednesday?
Yeah. Well, on the court status, Mr. Papoon and I'll have to tandem work that on. That was one we hadn't anticipated, but I think that'd be a fairly short research. On the guidelines, I think Tanya will have, and her team will have, a template ready for you to look at as soon as Wednesday. We'll continue to work it on the fly, but I think they've got some deliverables they could, they could come forward with. On, on enforcement options, I mean, we could come up with some options. On enforcement options, I mean, we could come up with some options for you, and it could go from zero to law enforcement, and then there's some in-betweens, and we could come up with options by Wednesday.
Well, yeah. I wonder if between now and Wednesday, meaning, I guess, Monday, you'd have a chance, we'd have a chance to talk, A, to the governor's office about enforcement follow-up, B, we could actually make some phone calls to our peers about how they want to treat enforcement. My thought is at least we'd have a, we'd be able to report back at least. We don't have to have the enforcement decision, but we could have the enforcement options by Wednesday.
Okay.
I'm kind of comfortable.
I believe we got to have options by Wednesday, yes.
And I think we could visit with the sheriff and the chief. I think when this first rolled out, remember, Dr. Minz, we were out there in front of the courthouse here, and I know the chief took the, I think he said it publicly, that they wanted to be more in a education and advisement role versus a hard enforcement. So, and I think that's what they did a lot. They ran into, they heard about areas, went and said, hey, you're outside the realm, and it kind of calmed it down. So, I think, we talked to the state, our peers in comparable counties, and then anything else we can get on enforcement. We're not the only county talking about this, I'm sure. And then we can talk to our chief and our sheriff, what they would think would be good. Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you would allow, I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
And that motion would be that we remove from our website any content related to reporting violations by citizens to report on other citizens.
Commissioner Dennis?
Could you expand that a little bit and direct the staff to come up with alternatives to that that don't involve 911?
Sure. But Commissioner Dennis, what concerns me is I don't like this whole idea of living in a police state where we're having government have a vehicle for people to turn in their neighbors on something. That doesn't seem right to me. That seems more police-state mentality than it does personal freedom. I have full faith in the citizens of Sedgwick County to adhere to it. I put a Facebook post on last night. I'm not happy with Governor Kelly's plan. I'm not going to attack her. I realize that she's a duly-elected governor, but I just personally, as a Sedgwick County commissioner, don't feel like we should be encouraging on our website people turning in their neighbors for violating this. That just inherently seems wrong. It reminds me of that old Benjamin Franklin quote that says, "For anyone that would give up personal essential liberties for temporary public safety," and this is just a, I know it's not a direct quote, "but deserves neither liberty or safety." I just feel like we shouldn't be doing that. So, I would, I get the 911 issue. That's a legitimate issue. But I also don't know that we, as elected officials, should be coming up with a way for neighbors to turn in their neighbors either. I don't, I don't think that's the right way to, I don't think that's the right way to handle it personally. If we do have a way to do it, then, you know, without violating people's personal liberty, I'm okay with that. I just, I just don't like it. We talked about, laughed earlier about the black market haircuts, like, is that our goal to put hairstylists in the county jail or put them out of business? Is it our goal to tell people that they can't use personal property that they have or go to the neighborhood playground? I just, that concerns me that government would do that. So, I don't necessarily feel like we, as government, should provide a vehicle for that.
Commissioner Cruz, did you have your sign up?
I did not.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just like to echo the comments of Commissioner O'Donnell. I'd like to remind ourselves, we didn't vote for this portal in the first place. This was put up by staff, and had they asked us in the first place, I'm not sure we would have had that put on the website in the first place. So, that's the first point I would make. Second of all, I think when you are restricting people's freedom, you're going to get a lot of, a lot of calls perhaps, because people don't, they don't understand necessarily what that's all about, and they want to see a lot of fairness in the community. They don't understand why someone's allowed to do something when I'm not allowed to do something. So, there's a lot of calls in that regard. Since we're relaxing generally where we've been for the last 38 days, I anticipate the calls probably be more educational. In other words, somebody might call up and say, I saw a restaurant open. Why are they allowed to do that? And they'd simply say, well, the governor's order allows that to happen now. You know, there's not a problem. If they have a genuine concern about something, more than likely, that person on the other end of that phone call can probably answer those questions. If they really want to make a complaint, they can certainly talk to commissioners. I'd be glad to take those complaints and deal with them on a one-by-one basis. I think that that's the better way to go through the elected representatives than through this portal. And I really think that it's time for us to get this off the website. If you guys want to have another idea, we can certainly talk about that and get that on the website that's reasonable and commissioner-approved. We can do that as soon as you guys are ready. But I think in the short term, this portal ought to have that report line taken off, because I think it doesn't really serve a purpose. Thank you. I would like to second that motion, please.
Okay. I was hoping we'd do this one after we did the first one, but that's okay. So, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Any other comments? So, the motion, do we have that clear, Clerk? What do you believe the motion is? Clerk?
Can I get a copy of it?
I don't have a copy. It wasn't written. You're just.
The one that Commissioner, that counselor sent to me mentioned, just the stay-at-home order, that we would take it down, although the stay-at-home order's going away anyway. So, I didn't want to put that in the motion.
No, I thought you meant the motion was to, one, your motion was to cease, to remove the.
Yes, yes, of violations, reporting a violation of citizens, reporting citizens a violation.
That's been seconded.
The initial order, or the initial statement that Counselor Papoun sent to me, mentioned stay-at-home, but that's going away anyway.
Right.
So, I felt that was redundant. So, I just wanted to take off the whole platform, the whole viol, the whole reporting.
Okay. You want to, your motion is to remove the reporting platform as it is today.
Yes, off of the county website.
Off the county website, as it is today. And that's clear on your second, Mr. Howell?
Yes.
And Commissioner Cruz has a question.
Thank you. No, I fully support this motion. I actually sent an email to the manager, I don't know, when was it?
Several weeks ago.
Several weeks ago, telling, making a form of request to take it off. So, I think it's a great idea. I think that citizens do report other citizens all the time, though. Not necessarily that we should have it on our website to write in, so I get that, but that's not mean, that's not to say that citizens aren't going to call to report other citizens, because that happens every single day. So, I am in support of this.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on the floor. Being no other signs, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meinsner?
Aye. Okay, the motion carries, five nothing. So, I would like to make a motion to draw this to a, as close, as close as close as we can get to, that accept the governor's plan to reopen Kansas effective May 4th and direct staff to review the business and industry guidelines recommended by the governor and report back to the county commission. Excuse me, I'll start over. I move to accept the Governor Kelly's plans to reopen Kansas effective May 4th and direct staff to review the business and industry guidelines and to review the enforcement procedure alternatives and the county counselor to review the courts and to report back to the county commission by Wednesday, May 6th, at the commission meeting.
Second.
Okay. I think that's a clear motion, I believe. Any questions or comments? Yeah?
I do, I do have a comment. I think that it's important for those who do have questions to understand where to go. Are we going to be placing, we'll have still kind of a robust portal on our COVID page on Sedgwick County's website, like the ADA, the American Dental Association, they have, I mean, all of these that our county counselor, you provided these to us, Justin, or somebody did, all of the recommended links, all of the questions that you have, because there are going to be questions that aren't settled by the time this opens. So, you have a gap between the 4th and the 6th. So, there are a couple of days. So, I would encourage folks to give us a call. We are in this together. We can figure this out. That's what I got to say about that.
I was going to, I was going to, I'll make a comment about that after the vote.
Okay.
Because I've got a thought. Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Yes, I'd like you to, you had a number of things listed there. Can you please go through those several items again?
We can repeat it, but basically, without repeating it all, but it's, compare the guidelines that we have versus the states, report back from the, on the court's status, and report back on enforcement alternatives.
And this is also to accept the governor's plan.
Right.
So, okay, I don't know if we can separate the motion, but I think that having some clarity on the court, on the courts is imperative. We have to understand that. I'm not sure it's necessary to be in a motion to do that, but people are asking, you know, what about the courts in the courthouse? I don't know. That needs to be part of this motion or not, but I have some reluctance to want to, to, again, it's not necessarily we accept the plan, but if we're going to make a motion and a vote to accept the plan, I've got some concerns about the plan. Also, you're talking about enforcement procedures, potentially. I think, and again, staff can bring that to us as a proposal. I don't know if it needs to be part of this motion. So, I am, in terms of the reviewing of the guidelines, the only thing we're going to end up with is potentially more restrictive policy for Sedgwick County. And again, somebody needs to make an argument as to why we would do that. I don't know that we need to make that part of this motion. At this time, I think I'll probably not support the motion. Thank you.
Okay. Well, and to clarify, from my motion, the public and the staff is asking for instructions, and I don't think any of those in my motion is, there's no intent that there will be a proposal or a requirement for us to have, they're supposed to bring back the reports on the status of each. But I respect your opinion. Commissioner Dennis?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. The governor's order is a legal document, from what I understand. Is that not correct, Justin?
Yeah, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. Yes, Commissioner Dennis, it's a, executive orders are given the force of law, under state law. So, it, when the governor issues an executive order, and if somebody acts contrary to that executive order, there's a separate statute that makes that action contrary to it, able to be charged as a Class A misdemeanor. So, I mean, it's like any other, in that respect, it's given the force and effect of law, and is treated like any other Class A misdemeanor.
Very good. That's what I thought. That's why I'm not sure that we need a motion for any of these items. We can, you as the chairman, I think if you just ask the manager to go and, and Mr. Papoun to ask the courts when they're going to be open and report back by May 6th, and for the manager to review the enforcement actions and report back to us May 6th. I don't know that we need a motion for any of that, because the, this has got the force of law, so.
You make a great point. Mike, do we need to be on record to have a motion, not necessarily to, I hear the Governor Kelly plan, so I'm glad that meant it or dropped the motion, if we can just strictly ask that you report back on the court's status, the guideline comparison between the county and the state's guidelines, and the enforcement alternatives that we've talked about before. Does that even require a motion?
Yeah, I think you could direct staff to do that, sir, and we, I'll come back with the information I'm supposed to provide.
Okay. So, I will withdraw my motion, and we will, we will kind of help summarize this meeting, but those are the three items that, as the chair, I am asking that you all get back with us on the May 6th meeting. Okay, so, motion is withdrawn.
So, we will not be taking the recommended action of our doctor to close buffets and playgrounds?
I didn't have that in there, but.
So, well, I guess I'm just asking, because I feel like we need to address that.
Well, it's.
I don't want to close anything. Let me just make myself clear. I don't want to close anything, but I think it's important for us to be clear with.
You know, the Quick Trips and everybody has done, I don't know, I don't think buffets are, you know, between, everybody's closed, the fountain drinks and everything. I like buffets, too.
I want them open, but.
But, so, Commissioner Dennis?
What I heard Friday on that conference call was that the restaurants have already put together their protocols, and their protocol said we're not going to have buffets.
Oh, yeah, might be right.
So, I don't know that we need to address that if it's in the protocols.
I just wanted to address it since he brought it up.
Okay.
That's all.
All right. Well, thanks for clarifying, bringing it up. Yeah, I think that's probably the feeling. I think what you said is probably the feeling. I'll just, as we get close to closing here, based on everything that's happened, I am going to work with, with staff myself, and I'm going to get a standard email and maybe even a standard text that can reference the executive order, the guidelines, and the, and the plan, so I can have links to those. And even in the plan, there's really good stuff, like on page 12, 15, 17, about phase two, there's things like that. So, I'm going to, and if you want to, I mean, I think the public still is at questions, the zoos and those things. I can't get into those yet, but I'm going to have more of a standard answer for all these questions, and so I'll be glad to share it with you all, and you can choose to share with your constituents, because I find myself repeating myself in my responses. But the facts are, the order, the facts are what the industries have done, and the facts are what the governor's plan is if it goes to phase two or three. So, as a, as an offering to you all, fellow commissioners, I will try to get that done really within the next couple hours, so we can have that, because the stuff keeps flying in at us. And so, I can't thank you enough for the discussion we've had today and the clarification. Justin and Mike, Dr. Minz, you joining us and sharing all of your information. Does anybody else have any, any other comments? Tom, please.
Chairman, we will put the governor's order on our website. We've tried to make our website the clearinghouse for all information, and we will have all of the documents you just talked about right there. We'll have that up on the website this afternoon for people to reference.
Okay, if you can have that, that's good, but I need more than just sedgwick.gov or sedgwick.org, because it's, you get to work all around. I'd rather have, maybe it's sedgwick.org slash here's your stuff, so we can, that's what we need to inform.
We'll figure out a tactical way to put it on where it's easily accessible.
Yeah, and it probably ought to be highly visible right off the bat, I would think. So, that's what everybody's asking about. Yes, Commissioner.
Along that line, Mr. Chairman, I think we ought to commit ourselves to developing a robust FAQ, frequently asked questions for our website, because I think, and I'm sure all of us have had the same questions, even, I heard, I heard some legislators last night talking about this, that I think maybe misunderstood exactly what the governor's order meant. And so, I talked to some people this morning that are very concerned that they don't, they didn't not quite understand what this meant. So, I think that the greatest purpose of today's meeting really was to get some clarification, and so hopefully some really great understanding of exactly what this is. But that FAQ would be really great if we could refer people to that and say, there's a section on restaurants, there's a section on playgrounds, or whatever it would be, that we could simply refer people to that, and it would be something we can have control over. We can add, add information to that as information continues to come up that people are questioning. So, I'd love to see that put on the website on the front page, if that'd be okay. Thank you.
I might mention to Commissioner on that, that is the goal of the guidelines that the county's going to establish, is to reference all of those in a nice, easily attainable package. The problem is that we're, I just don't know that we'll have that done by Monday. We'll continue to work on that and get that up as soon as possible, but that is the goal of the, of the county reopen policy that Tanya is working on.
Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? So. Okay. Other comments? So Ms. Cruz?
Just wash your hands, cover your face, and keep your distance. That's what we're saying.
Okay. All right. Well, effective at 12:01 a.m. on Sunday night or Monday morning, 12:01 a.m., the governor's orders are in place. And thank you, community, for, for being responsible to get us to this phase. And let's hope that between our businesses and our communities, our churches and our citizens, that we continue to practice this and be safe for another couple of weeks as it, as we watch going forward. So, you know, as they say, to the stars through difficulties, we are in a spot. So thank you. No further action taken or desired, so we will adjourn the meeting.